It is Monday, November 14th. Would you join us with the pledge of allegiance as I call the meeting to order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Superintendent Krieger all of a sudden realized that maybe this year she gets to call some snow days. But she didn't call a snow day, but it's snowing.
Next, Tom.
Before we move into the meeting this evening, I'd like to approve the agenda. There are no additions or deletions, so the agenda stands as outlined.
Moved, approved. Second.
We have a motion by Sachin and a second by Art. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven-zero vote. Tonight, we have recognition by the school board, and we would like to rec-- first of all, we would like to recognize Eastview High School Boys Soccer Head Coach Scott Gustafson to introduce Class AAA Mr. Soccer and Assistant Coach of the Year through the Minnesota State High School League. So, we gotta get our Mr. Soccer up here and get introduced. Welcome.
Superintendent, school board, thank you. This fall, from purely an attacking perspective, Asher has been arguably the most dynamic goal scorer in Minnesota High School Boys Soccer history. His statistics speak for themselves: 39 goals, 7 assists, and leading Eastview to overall record of 15, 3-1 this year. Asher scored a goal in four games, 2 goals in eight games, an astonishing 3 goals in five games, and had a single 4-goal game on the season. For those of you that follow soccer, these numbers are quite incredible, not normally seen in such a competitive high school setting. Sometimes, I find it difficult to adequately describe his play. A short list of his most notable accomplishments: He was the South Sarooon Conference Player of the Year, the Pioneer Press Player of the Year, the Star Tribune Player of the Year, Minnesota's Own Mr. Soccer, as voted on by the Coaches Association, U.S. Soccer Coaches All-American-to-be, and only one of 20 high school players invited to play in the All-American Game this coming December 9th in Florida, Panama City, Florida. This statistically dominant single-season story is what everyone sees, but what makes it even more remarkable is the growth and maturity that Asher has shown over the last 36 months to get him to this point. You see, Asher only registered a single goal and 2 assists his sophomore year, struggling at times even to get minutes. He then started to put things together at the tail end of his junior year, notching 11 goals and 9 assists. It was then that we started to see a glimpse of what was to come this fall. This fall, Asher came into camp with a newfound maturity, drive, joy, and confidence derived from a competitive and successful summer club season. His pace, his power, and ability to score equally well with his feet or his head was a pleasure to watch and is what I believe sets him apart from a very talented group of high school soccer players this fall. It has been a blessing and privilege to coach you, Asher. This recognition in front of the school board is well-deserved, so congratulations, buddy.
Congratulations. How exciting. And now we have the assistant coach.
Yes. So, my assistant coach, Alex Curry, board superintendent for the past 12 years. Alex has been the one constant amongst an ever-changing coaching staff as part of a very successful program. A key component, as you probably know, for any successful team in any sport is a knowledgeable, trustworthy, and loyal assistant coach. Alex is a great teacher, counselor, and confidant to the players, and has been a rock for me for over half of my 20 years, as has coach. Alex helped coach the Lightning Boys Soccer Program, if you remember, to a state championship in 2012 and sandwiched amongst two second-play finishes in 2011 and 2013. Eastview Lightning Soccer and I personally owe a large amount of its success as a program to Coach Curry. Alex teaches English, advises link leadership, the Lightning press, coaches ninth-grade boys' basketball, and JV's golf in addition to his job as a varsity boys' soccer coach. With my retirement from coaching this year, I would be remiss if I did not offer a public endorsement, Mr. Percival, of Alex continuing the Lightning Soccer legacy of being in pursuit of excellence in everything we say and do. This recognition for Alex is well-deserved and long overdue. Congratulations, buddy.
Retiring, congratulations. Mr. Percival, I hope you heard that. And now, we would like to welcome the Rosemont High School Assistant Principal Calvin Keasley, and he will introduce to us the Class 4A Grand Champions 2022 Youth and Music Marching Band Champions.
Good evening. Chairperson Magnuson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Calvin Keasley, and I am the Assistant Principal at Rosemont High School in charge of our school's visual and performing arts programming. It's my pleasure to speak with you this evening. Over the past few decades, our marching band program at Rosemont High School has grown in size and success. This year, our band had an undefeated season in Minnesota and Iowa, and this past weekend, our marching band competed at the Bands of America Grand National Championships in Indianapolis, where it placed 5th in the 3A Division and 18th overall. And in just over a month and a half from now, the Rosemont High School Marching Band will be representing our school, city, district, and state as they participate in the Tournament of Roses Parade in Pasadena, California on January 2nd. The success of our band is a result of many factors, but I'd like to name a few of them. The first is our district's commitment to band for all. This commitment has made it so that every elementary, middle, and high school student who attends in our district has the opportunity, regardless of means, to participate in band. The second is the support of parents and guardians and family members for our students learning to play instruments. Our Rosemont High School Marching Band of 235 students is a success today because of the love, support, and vision of their parents and guardians. The third is the leadership and direction by our instrumental music staff at RHS. We have four amazing directors who are here with us tonight: Taylor Eliason, Calvin Lepetsky, Scott Palmer, and Leon Sieve. They work together tirelessly to design, build, rehearse, learn, and perform the marching band show. They do this along with the assistance of over a dozen section instructors and coaches. The fourth factor is our students themselves. Students have put in over 200 hours of rehearsal time, not counting sectional time, performance time, and individual practice since July. Their dedication and strong work ethic and commitment to the band community has helped them grow in their abilities and success as an ensemble overall. Now, to speak specifically to the accomplishment that the band is here for tonight. This year, RHS Marching Band competed in the 17th Annual Youth and Music Championships, which is both a state tournament for marching bands and a championship festival that includes competition for bands from our neighboring states. The performance of "The Rose" by the RHS Band earned them the title of Minnesota State Champions in 4A, Class 4A Champions, where bands from five different states were represented, and Grand Champions of the event. The band also received awards for outstanding percussion and outstanding visual. This recognition marks the 15th time out of the 17 years that this championship series has been run that Rosemont has been first in state and grand champions. The success we've had this season and the success that we will have going forward in the Tournament of Roses Parade is also the result of strong student leadership. At Rosemont High School, we are fortunate to have four gifted student leaders who guide and support their marching bandmates in achieving success this season. They are our drum majors. They embody the Irish Way and our core values and are here to represent the marching band this evening. They are Grace Brant, whose parents are here, Kirsten and John, Julia Grayson, whose parents, Mandy and Jeff, are here, Jackson Jones, parents Lisa and Paul, and Adam Polanski, parents Greg and Yvonne. It is my pleasure to present them to you on behalf of the Rosemont Marching Band for your recognition of their achievement for being first in state and having received the title of Grand Champions at the Youth and Music Championships on October 8th.
Can we have the band parents stand up? And coaches? We have truly been beyond impressed watching this band. Just amazing. And talk about people who work. I know, I don't live very far from the stadium, and I can hear them at 10 o'clock at night, and they're still out there. And I'm walking my dog, and I'm thinking, well, I can't go in yet, they're not done with this section. It's incredible, the amount of time, the amount of energy, the amount of dedication that you've put into what you've done and your craft, way past when I was calling or saying the stuff for the marching band when I was in high school. And now, where the bus is gonna take you on Route 66, you'll notice that it looks like a bus. Way past that. This is truly art. This is truly art, and it's so amazing. If you have not seen them perform, you have missed something truly blessing. And maybe they will be-- yeah. Will they be on-- I know they get to perform at the Rose Bowl, and I don't imagine that's anything that we can find on TV. I know I could watch it, I watched it last weekend.
We'll wait and see how the coaching does, and we may have one more performance at US Bank.
Oh, that would be awesome. Good, we'll let people know. Thank you so much. Thank you, parents, for your dedication. And I was remiss, I should have the rest of the coaches, the band coaches, they're not coaches. Band directors. But you're really coaches at this point. Stand up, we'd like to thank you. Amazing, amazing. We'll look forward to seeing you at the bank and on the 2nd. Thank you, congratulations. We'll turn it over to the superintendent for recognitions of students and staff.
We have a lot happening, and a lot of it has the word Rosemont in front of it. So, congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Soccer Team on winning the Class 3A State Championship on November 4th. We will get a chance to recognize the team at an upcoming board meeting. Congratulations to runners, representing all four District 196 high schools who competed in the cross-country state tournament November 5th in Northfield. Rosemont High School finished runner-up in the team competition of the boys' tournament, and Ryan Mulrooney of Rosemont was a top individual finisher from the district in 4th place. In the girls' tournament, Eastview and Egan finished 12th and 16th respectively in the team competition. Congratulations to the Rosemont High School Football Team on advancing to the semifinal round of the state Class 6A State Tournament, and good luck in that game, which is Friday, November 18th, 7:30 p.m. at US Bank Stadium against Eden Prairie. And I think they're looking to fill the stadium if possible. The winner will play in the championship game December 2nd. And finally, congratulations and good luck to our student athletes who qualified to compete in the Girls Swimming and Diving State Tournament later this week. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to the items on the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening are the minutes of the October 22nd, 2022 regular school board meeting, the minutes of the October 31st, 2022 special school board meeting, the minutes of the November 2nd, 2022 special school board meeting, and the minutes of the November 7th, 2022 special school board meeting. We have equity advisory council appointments, we have gifts, we have advertising revenue, grants, treasurer's report for September 2022, we have summary of claims for September 2022, we have the schedule of investments for September 2022, we have revenue and expenditures report for September 2022, we have personnel, we have an employee agreement, we have workman's compensation insurance resolution, we have a joint powers agreement between the County of Dakota and Independent School District 196 for breastfeeding support group services, we have an agreement for student teaching experiences, the University of Minnesota Morris, we have the State of Minnesota through Normandale Community College, Minnesota State Colleges, and universities income contact contract, we have tuition agreement between Intermediate District 917 and Independent School District 196 for Dakota County Area Learning School or DECALs, and we have the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Grant. With that, are there any items board members would like to remove tonight for questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
So moved? Second.
Motion by Cory, second by Joel. All in favor of the consent agenda as outlined indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven-zero vote. We have no reports this evening, but we'll move into old business. Our old business in front of us this evening is Policy 801: District Community Relations. We'll call up Jill Coyle.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. As Chairperson Magnuson indicated, I am before you tonight with Policy 801: District Community Relations. You'll recall that back on October 24th, I was before you with new business, talking about some proposed changes to this policy. I won't go into the same level of detail that we went into on October 24th, but I will provide you with a brief summary. The change that's proposed tonight is a slight adjustment to the process of scheduling community listening sessions. And perhaps for the benefit of the listening public, I'll frame up what is a community listening session. So, these are sessions that are scheduled across our district on a monthly basis, and they provide an opportunity to our community to raise their concerns and share information with board members, up to three board members, again, on a monthly basis. We established these sessions a little over a year ago in the interest of having more informal exchanges with our community members. Currently, the district, as I said, holds these sessions on a monthly basis during the school year, and stakeholders can sign up in advance. However, if nobody signs up, there's presently no mechanism in the policy to cancel a session due to lack of interest. Tonight's change is to allow the district to cancel a session if nobody has signed up by 3:00 p.m. on the Friday before a scheduled community listening session. Even with the change, if at least one person signs up in advance, the session will occur as planned, and other community members can also attend and sign up to speak at the session that evening. The change is proposed in order to save time and travel and free up building space with respect to those sessions for which there is no advanced community interest. This is a action item tonight as new old business, and your approval is requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move into discussion, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Bianca, second by Sakoudin. Are there questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members?
No, we talked about it last time. I think everybody's under the same assumption that if nobody's coming, we don't need to throw a party.
So, with that, we've got a motion by Bianca, a second by Sakoudin, to approve the changes in Policy 801: The District Community Relations. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That passes on a seven-zero vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item under old business this evening is the 2023-24 calendar, and we'll call up Shelley Munson.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Shelley Munson, Coordinator of Human Resources. I'll be referring to the school calendar for the 2023-24 year that was introduced as new business at the last board meeting on October 24th. I need to highlight a modification to that calendar. An error was discovered that included three additional days at the end of April. This error requires us to add three more student days to the calendar. We reconvene the calendar committee, which is made up of district administrators and DQ representatives. The committee's unanimous recommendation was to convert three days of winter break to student days. Therefore, January 3rd, 4th, and 5th will now be student contact days. All other days in the calendar remain unchanged. I would like to remind you that the calendar committee is planning to meet again soon to further discussions regarding the 2024-25 calendar, and once a recommendation is made on that calendar, we'll bring that to you at a future board meeting date. On behalf of administration, I recommend that you approve this modified 2023-24 school calendar. It will provide a calendar specifically for families to clearly identify school days once a calendar is approved. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Super, this is an action item tonight, so I'll ask for a motion in a second before we move into questions.
Moved, approved. Second.
A motion by Art and a second by Cory. Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Well, just when you thought you had-- excuse me. Did you have a question? Go ahead.
Well, I do, and I comment too. You know, I'm new to the board, right? And so, this is the first calendar that I've been part of, and there seems to be a lot of dialogue. I get a lot of emails. And you just said that you have district leadership and DQ as part of the committee. Have you considered inviting students or parents into that conversation, or are they already part of that?
Yeah, I think, you know, sometimes there have been some surveys in that, and we've taken that into consideration. At this time, it's that administrative team, but we gather with that team to have that input and kind of knowing what their families and their students' preferences are, so I think that dialogue happens out in the buildings.
I think the calendar is a hot topic subject for families. As somebody who had a kindergartner, an elementary, and a middle schooler last year, the three different start dates is challenging. Having your middle schooler start before your elementary in a district where childcare is hard to find, especially towards the end of the summer, is also challenging. I'd like to know, as we look at this, how-- it doesn't seem to have changed over the last year, right? It looks very similar. What we've learned and experienced and how we can do better in the future, because I do get a lot of emails and concerns from families. Having students start before Labor Day, is it valuable? I don't know. As a board member, I feel like I haven't-- that value hasn't been communicated well. It is-- it does cut out an opportunity for students to earn income with that change. So, it's just-- it's tough. This is a tough thing to vote on, I understand, but I want to make sure that I'm voicing that concern from the community, if that makes sense.
I do, it does, yes, appreciate that. And I do think, looking at maybe different options is one of the reasons that there was a pause, rather than bringing two years' worth of calendar forward. One of the considerations, recognizing that there are more student contact days for our secondary students than elementary, by having the different start dates, it does allow all of our students to end on the same date, or otherwise, we have that issue at the end of the school year, which we've had in some previous calendars, but certainly hear your points on that before school start. There has been some expression by our school administrators that days earlier in the year do have more benefit maybe in student learning than days right at the end of the year in June, so it's kind of that balance.
I'd say, as you come for the next school year calendar, you know, one of the things in the advisory councils that I sit on, they talk a lot about that Wednesday over the pandemic and how beneficial that was. And I know it was something that was discussed, how can we give staff more time? As you look at new curriculum changes and things, we talk about mental health, you know, how are we giving staff more time to be successful and thus our students can be more successful? So, I'm hoping that we don't just get a repeat of the next calendar year, but that we can see some of that intentionally brought in, or at least tell me why it wasn't. Sorry. I just-- it feels weird to have this conversation, just, you know, the two of us, but it is a concern that I've heard a lot of from families and staff.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that. And I do, again, think that's one reason why kind of a pause and just exploring some other options before we bring forward the next year's calendar, when we have a little more time to look at some other alternatives. So, we'll take those into consideration. Thank you.
And just as I was gonna say, you had such a beautiful calendar with two weeks off for-- and this is, Bianca's right, this is one of the hardest things that we do, because it does affect people. And a lot of people would try to squeeze in those dates between Labor Day and Memorial Day and squeeze, and now maybe, you know, and then have that discussion about more time for staff, which means students-- some parents aren't gonna be liking that either if you have a two-hour late start or something. So, it's all a balancing act, and if we look at different religions, what religions do we have off or don't have off? So, there's a lot of things that go into this calendar, and we've had-- this conversation has gone on for years of what is the right balance, and it'll keep going on. So, I mean, we just keep asking the questions, is this the right calendar for us? Are we getting enough-- are our teachers getting enough planning time? Are-- so they can help students move across? And is it effective and efficient and helpful for our parents? So, it's always a conversation, and we'll look forward to your next one. And we have-- we probably-- I know we've done surveys, maybe we do another, maybe it's time to do another survey before the next one. I'm not sure how far you are out on time, but--
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we've got a motion by Art, a second by Cory, to approve the calendar for the 2023-24 school year. All in favor of the calendar indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes on a seven-zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under items of new business, we've got the Connections Preschool Fees for 2023-24. We'll call up Kaia Bruce. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am Kaia Bruce, Director of Community Education, and I'm sharing with you tonight the first reading of the proposed Connections Preschool Fee Increases for the 2023-24 school year. These proposed fees are based on federal poverty guidelines and utilizes a sliding fee scale correlating to family income and size. The fees also reflect a 2.5% inflationary increase from the current year. I'll be back on December 12th for your approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
With that, is there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Looks good.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have the 2023-24 Middle School and High School Course Revisions, and Steve Troden will walk us through our course revisions.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am Kaia Bruce, Director of Community Education, and I'm sharing with you tonight the first reading of the proposed Connections Preschool Fee Increases for the 2023-24 school year. These proposed fees are based on federal poverty guidelines and utilizes a sliding fee scale correlating to family income and size. The fees also reflect a 2.5% inflationary increase from the current year. I'll be back on December 12th for your approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
With that, is there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? Looks good.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have the 2023-24 Middle School and High School Course Revisions, and Steve Troden will walk us through our course revisions.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm here this evening once again to present an overview of the proposed Middle School and High School Course Revisions for 2023-24. This is part of an annual cycle. I truly enjoy this opportunity each year to go through this process and shine the spotlight on some of the great curricular opportunities that are available to our students, and I think you'll see that these opportunities really lay a foundation for a large share of our AAA philosophy in the arts, academics, and athletics. As District 196 students progress throughout their academic career, they have a wide range of opportunities, again, laying that foundation for success in the AAA philosophy in the future. As students move from elementary to middle school and onto high school, the range of course offerings gradually grows. As students advance within the high school grades, they have a wide range of opportunities to deepen study in specific content areas and also to explore a significant variety of elective areas. Each year, I have an opportunity to collaborate with teachers, building the district administrators in the teaching and learning department, and facilitate a process to continually revise and develop course offerings in our middle schools and our high schools, resulting in constantly evolving and, again, a wide breadth of curricular offerings. Our course revisions each year reflect the story of what is happening in education at the local, state, and national levels. Many factors shape the proposed course changes each year. One such factor is the academic content standards, which are developed at the state level through the Minnesota Department of Education. Districts are responsible for placing the content standards in specific courses and aligning those courses. Sometimes, the standards do not change, but where the content is taught may shift. Also, at times, courses may be slightly restructured or renamed to better reflect course content and/or standards. The cumulative goal of all of our course offerings is successful preparation for our students' future, shifting trends in the career marketplace in addition to the demands of pull-ups. Shifting trends in the career marketplace, in addition to the demands of post-secondary education, both have an impact on our course offerings. Our students have a number of opportunities to earn college credit while receiving high school credit, and taking college in the schools, advanced placement, and other dual credit courses. These courses continue to help parents in our district save thousands in tuition dollars, and our students benefit by being college-ready. There's always an ongoing effort to seek ways to increase these types of courses. For some examples here for 23-24, ongoing expansion of college credit opportunities would include the AP Calculus course, which is being proposed at all high schools. In addition, Apple Valley, Eastview, and SES are proposing the addition of an Intro to Education course as a new offering, which will provide students with college credit as they explore the career field in education. Career preparation pathways, specialized programs, and partnerships with business or higher ed partners also continues to grow. In addition, real-world challenges and specific student needs and interests help to drive course offerings as well. Examples for 2023-24 include the Rosemont High School proposal to offer a full-year American Sign Language elective course, in line with growing student interest. In addition, the feasibility of an online district-wide Ojibwe language course is proposed, and the Aviation Exploration Course currently offered at Eagan High School is being proposed as a district-wide offering to reach more students. Also, for the upcoming year, Eagan High School is proposing new electives such as sports officiating, providing an opportunity to help meet the demand, the growing demand for local athletic officials. And also, Eagan High School is proposing a work experience course called Fusion to introduce students to the career field opportunities in special education. Furthermore, an expansion, the number of unified courses is being proposed. Unified courses currently in the district provide a unique opportunity for regular education students to work alongside, side-by-side with center-based special education students in the same adaptive physical education course, fostering a rich inclusive environment. Looking ahead to next year, Eastview High School is proposing to expand those course offerings from the successful unified PE course to also include dance, cooking, and art courses as well. In addition, Blackhawk Middle School is proposing the first-ever unified physical education course as an elective at the middle school level. Every year, staff members at each high school move through a process to determine what courses will be proposed to be offered. Throughout this process, our schools are supported by the teaching and learning department, and our schools continue to work together and continue to share what works with one another. As you can see on the detailed course list in your board packet, a number of new courses are proposed to be added. Some courses will be dropped, and many courses will be restructured. Again, it is easy to note the collaboration and sharing of ideas across our schools, as there are several elective course offerings which are proposed for multiple schools, and some courses which end up being replicated from school to school based on the success of one course at one school being duplicated by other schools in the district. Administrators collaborate continually to share ideas and build success as a district. Each course must progress through a thorough review process before approval, including the involvement of teachers, principals, the teacher and learning department, and review by the superintendent's cabinet. The board serves as the final step in that approval process. And tonight is the first reading, so I'm here under new business. In your board packet, you have been provided a full list of the proposed course changes and rationales. I'm scheduled to return to this, with this agenda item, at the December 12th board meeting under old business. At this time, I'd be happy to pause here and answer any questions that you might have this evening.
Super, we will see this again, as Steve said, on December 12th. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions and comments from board members? Anything pique your curiosity?
Suchan. This is one of my favorite things every year. I think I really look forward to this. This shows how you, the staff, and the district continues to prioritize creating contemporary access to education. And you mentioned all the four, but the four that I had written over here that really stuck out to me was the Intro to Education. You know, we play an important role in being stewards and nourishers of the pipeline of this wonderful education profession. And introducing this, I think, is just a good stewardship that we do in our role of enriching the pipeline as well. In addition to that, Fusion was another thing that caught my eye. Talk about special education as a profession, and I really appreciate you kind of focusing on that. Ojibwe as a word language is fabulous, fantastic, and I really appreciate us doing that. And last but not least, sports officiating. It's a, it'll be interesting to see how many folks enroll in that. But I think it'll be, it's a great way to help our students find, perhaps enriching summer professions too, you know, if nothing else. Really, really good focus amongst everything else. Those four really caught my eye, so good.
Yeah, those four were several that stood out to me as well. And I applaud the efforts of our high school principals and assistant principals and several who are here this evening for being forward-thinking.
Yeah.
And offering relevant courses and high-interest courses to students, but also courses at the same time that are building towards, you know, a demand. Like the teacher education, we have teacher education courses, electives already, but now this is a college credit-bearing course to add to that. And the sports officiating and the special education career fields, it's aligning with current demand and demand in the future.
Quick follow-up, Steve. What is the process for us getting this information in the hands of parents and guardians that they know that this is accessible through their, you know, and maybe can nudge them in this direction potentially?
Great question, and in part to kind of contributes to the timing this evening. So here we are in November, already talking about next fall. But we come back in December and ask for approval, and as soon as that, you know, approval is granted each year, then this information, these revisions go into the course registration guides, both print and digital at each high school, and then that's pushed out to families and students. I also know that each school too, there's a number of other ways internally where students are, I guess, made aware of those changes and, you know, and there's, you know, orientation for next year's freshmen and so on. So there's multiple avenues, but that all kicks in in December and January.
Thank you. Thank you, Jackie.
Cory?
One, one quick comment also. In addition to a lot of things that Suchan said, this is one of my favorite topics also. Pretty sure this is one of favorite Joel's, of Joel's too, because he mentions that every time we've approved these. But, you know, when I look at all the course revisions in here right now, what really stands out to me is our AAA philosophy. I see amazing new offerings in arts, academics, and athletics, from the world languages to the unified art, to the AP pre-calculus. I just think it's just a wonderful new offerings that we're able to, you know, give to our students. And also, the other thing that really caught my eye during your presentation was not just the offerings, but hearing the success stories of some pilot programs, I think it was at Eagan High School, that was successful, and now we're able to roll out district-wide.
Yeah, that's a key component. I think there's a track record, each one of our high schools and also middle schools over the years have brought forth or piloted or initiated a course that has been duplicated over time at other schools. Sometimes it comes forward with all schools together, and sometimes it's one school trying something odd based on student interest, and then it's successful, and then it grows across the district.
Love seeing it. Joel?
I will. I'll do my annual statement, although it's been said already, but I just love this exhibit, and I just love hearing about how we're just evolving as a district and meeting the needs of our students. Truly makes me want to be a high school student so I can get in on some of this stuff. The ones that jumped out at me specifically were the Ojibwe, the American Sign Language, and all the many, many unified courses that are going to be offered next year. All three, I think, are going to find a good audience and are going to be really helpful for our students, and in addition to all the other ones on here. But those are the ones that piqued my interest, so very exciting as always, so thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I agree. Congratulations. I love this too. And some of the things, the Ojibwe, when we were talking at our last Tribal Nations meeting, they were ecstatic that we were moving forward with Ojibwe language. I have a grandson who is a Pee-wee hockey player, and I watch high school kids be the refs in games. And what a great way you learn more about your game, you learn more about your craft by learning how to be a ref. So how much fun. This is, as Cory said, it really highlights our AAA philosophy, because you've got something from every end, and the unified classes are just a great idea. That's, that's perfect. So thank you so much.
It's a team effort. I thank you to the teacher leaders and the administrators, so.
We'll see on the 12th.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening is facilities master plan preliminary recommendations. We're going to talk, call up Mark Stotts, and we'll first turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Thank you, thank you. I'm going to let the presentation come up. So as we're pulling up the presentation, you know, I think this is a great segue from what Steve talked about with the coursework that we're offering and into the presentation on our facilities plan. Because just like with our coursework, we continue to evolve as a district to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students that we have in front of us at the time that they're in front of us. And we can't just sort of rest on our laurels from the past. But we do use that AAA, academics, arts, and athletics philosophy has been part of our district for a number of years. I know when my children were little, that was part of what drew us to this district, and they certainly benefited from that. So as an administrative team, we're looking at how do we continue to meet the needs of our students today, but also to keep in mind those students who are going to be coming to us and growing through the district. We have the most incredible opportunities at these board meetings to recognize our high school kids usually that are excelling. Tonight is no exception, and we heard about our band, we heard about our soccer, swimming team, cross country. I mean, everywhere you look around District 196, we are presented with students who are able to excel. And so as part of that, thinking about that, you think it didn't just happen in those high school years. In fact, it was mentioned today how Band for All helps us to grow that incredible band program throughout the district from the time our students come to us as little ones until they leave us as students in high school. So we're looking at this and thinking, how do we ensure that District 196 is taking on the responsibility and the diligence to be able to continue to serve our students and our community into the future? And the first slide up is a slide from Apple Valley High School, and you can see some changes that were made in the learning area there. And the thing that's different about this picture, I don't know where the picture went. Here it is. We found the picture. So the thing that's interesting to me every time I see this picture is that I think you'd be hard-pressed to take that same photo today, because you walk into Apple Valley High School anytime, day or night, there are students everywhere. They're working alone, they're working together. They really are using this to enhance their learning, using space, and it's kind of a great way, I think, to look at that and see how important those physical components can be to ensuring optimal learning for kids. So sadly, and we'll go to the next slide, one of that, we were thrust, our whole country was thrust into a new reality about 10 years ago, when Sandy Hook Elementary School suffered from the terrible tragedy. And at that time, we had to look at our schools, and if you look, the picture there shows Parkview Elementary School, and in 2015, you could walk in and have access anywhere in the building. So we recognized, as did so many other school districts, that that was no longer an acceptable standard. So in 2013-14, we had four different stakeholder groups that conducted separate reviews of safety and security, space for preschool, elementary growth, and learning technology. And those were the four themes that evolved at that time that we really wanted to look into and to try to come out to our community and say, here are some needs that we have. So that task force reviewed those areas, they got public input, and they came forward to the school board and recommended a bond referendum. So we fast-forward, and on November 3rd, 2015, our community approved the Safe and Successful Schools referendum. And we had safety and security, we had secure entrances and safety improvements at all of our schools that you literally can see. Again, there's Parkview's entrance today very different than it was. We had created additional space for learning, most notably in entire elementary school, Eastlake Elementary that opened in the fall of 2017. And then, we had technology for learning. So we were able to put together one-to-one access for our students that we were very grateful for when COVID hit, and we were ready to hit the ground running with that technology and continue learning for our students. Those construction projects kept going, they were completed in phases, mostly were finished by 2019. And part of that is just by way of saying, it's important for us to look right now into what we want for the future, because the future will be here before we know it. So the timeline is spring 2020, we had enrollment study completed. And it's so interesting, because things have changed pretty dramatically. At that time, the demographer was projecting huge rapid growth in the district, up to 3,000 more students. And then COVID came, and all of that shifted pretty significantly. But we knew we still had needs that were not being addressed, and we know, looking into the future, we have needs that we want to take a look at. So last spring, spring of 2021, our Facilities and Equipment Steering Committee was established. Then, in that fall, we did an attendance area adjustment. Those changes are to help ensure that we were utilizing our secondary school space as best we could and to balance our enrollments across those secondary schools. Then, this fall of 2022, we did, had a community survey that showed support for some proposed facilities improvements. The committee completed the review, and they brought forth some recommendations to administration. And that leads us to tonight, when we are going to present those preliminary recommendations to address the facilities and equipment needs that we foresee for the next 10 years. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Director of Finance and Operations, Mark Stotts, and he's going to walk through what some of those recommendations are, and then at the end, we'll share some ways that we can be sure that we get public input as we go through this process. Thank you, Mark.
Chair Magnuson, members of the school board. So tonight, we're here, as Mary stated, to present a preliminary facilities master plan for your consideration. And then the plan is, this week, we have dialogue sessions on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night at Three High School, Eastview High School, Rosemont High School, and Eagan High School, to give the community an opportunity to provide their input. But I want to start out, this first slide shows the makeup of the Facilities and Equipment Steering Committee. As Mary mentioned, this committee was formed and started their work prior to the pandemic, but then everything was put on pause and really started up again in the spring of 2021. So they've been at it for a year and a half. And probably our most valuable resource is working with world architects and engineers. Scott McQueen is here this evening. But they really provided us with a lot of direction on the work and a lot of the estimates for costs and square footage needs and items of that nature. So the committee really looked at this, and they said, and as Mary indicated, you know, the enrollment landscape changed prior to the pandemic versus when the committee started their work again. And so this is more than about just growth in the district. It addresses many needs in the district. Some of the, some of the charges that we had to consider as we were developing this recommendation was, what do we need to best serve the school district's educational goals in providing the desired student daily experience? Obviously, any plan that we have has to be financially attainable and sustainable. Again, we want to reflect the values and priorities of the communities that we serve in the district. And we want to take into account that projected enrollment. While we're not growing at the pace that was predicted prior to the pandemic, we're still a growing district over the next 10 years, that growth is just going to be a little bit slowed down. Also, we looked at a 10-year time period, but then we wanted to look out beyond those 10 years, say, what are the possibilities beyond the next 10 years? The Phase 1 portion of this plan really, really addresses the next 10 years, but we looked at it beyond that time period, and we'll present those findings to you also. And then, we want to make sure that we're utilizing our existing facilities up to their maximum capacities. So we're, we've also stayed many of those issues. The following areas were really areas that the committee focused on. Safety, security, and supervision. Instructional space obviously is at the core of what we do. Our early Our early childhood programs, we're only serving about 7% of the district, three and four-year-olds. We, we have waiting lists, we'd like to serve a higher percentage of that population, so we looked at the early learning areas. Special education continues to grow in the district, and so we have to consider their needs. Equity and integration is important in every aspect of what we do in the district. Career and technical education pathways, again, it's a growing area to prepare students for future careers in maybe not the college-bound atmosphere. And then co-curricular planning. So here's the listing, I'm not going to go through the 20 meetings, but as I stated earlier, this wasn't a one or two-meeting recommendation that was developed. This took course, or took place over the course of a year and a half. 20 meetings, I really commend the people that served on this committee because it was really a dedicated effort. And we had many subcommittees that looked at various aspects of what we were discussing. And so it's been a very thoughtful process, and, and we hope people understand that, that we've had to just, adjust things as we go. As we found out more about the enrollments, as the community survey came about, we've had to adjust our thinking a little bit, so. Okay, so tonight, we're presenting the Long Range Facilities Master Plan that accommodates educational needs, enrollment in programs over the next 10 years, and is financially sustainable. And we really grouped, we grouped our categories into three areas. The first one was safety, security, and supervision. As Mary stated earlier, the previous referendum really moved us a long way towards more safety and security within the district. But that's going to be an ongoing need, and I don't think it's ever going to go away. We also looked at the growth component because we know in the southeast part of the district, we have overcrowded schools, and the enrollment is growing in that area. And then we want to make sure we provide a consistent student experience throughout the district regardless of the school that students attend in the district. So again, we mentioned the growth, it's not, we're not growing at the rate that we had initially anticipated, so the committee, committee had to kind of shift gears and, and factor that into this recommendation. I talked about the need for additional space in the southeast area of the district. Again, we want to make sure that any kind of facilities expansion considers current space and allowing for program offerings. And so as Mary stated earlier, we did do the boundary changes for the high schools, and that's really helped relieve some of the pressure on, on our buildings. And then we want to make sure that our buildings, we're utilizing them to their capacity. So seven of the 19 elementaries are currently operating over capacity. Those that aren't, as we've stated numerous times, we have a growing center-based special education program that is housed in our buildings and in addition to that, early childhood programs. So while seven of the 19 are over capacity, all our buildings are being utilized to their fullest extent. Pressure is the greatest in the southeast portion of the district. East Lake probably was over capacity the year it opened, or at least the year after it opened. And Rosemount Elementary continues to feel the pressure of overcrowding. And we have new residential developments out in that area that continue. So this is a picture of the land that the district purchased utilizing 2015 bond referendum dollars. This would help if an elementary school were located on this site. It would help relieve the enrollment pressures at East Lake and Rosemount Elementary. And you can see all the development that has occurred around that land, and there's even more today than what this picture is showing. So if we look at the gross, growth component, the greatest need for space is at the high school level. But we also have a lot of need at Rosemount Scott Highlands Middle School as there's new housing in that area. And here's a picture of the Scott Highlands Middle School cafeteria multipurpose area. Not quite sure what happened to that picture. It got turned sideways from this afternoon when we were looking at it. Might have been my PowerPoint skills as I was editing these things. But then you can see the overcrowding in the hallways at Rosemount Middle School on the right-hand side. And this is a picture of the Rosemount campus, which houses all three Rosemount schools, Rosemount High School, Middle School, and Elementary. There's a significant overlap in vehicle parking and field usage. Rosemount High School parking is at its maximum. If we were to build a new Rosemount Middle School, the acreage requirements for a new middle school are much greater than what the current building sits on. There's growth pressure on all three of these schools, and there's really no way to expand this campus. There's no direction that we could go there. So if you look at kind of the phased approach that we're suggesting for the growth component of this plan, we'd be looking at a new elementary school, number 20, on the land that we already own. We'd also be suggesting a new Rosemount Middle School to replace the existing Rosemount Middle School, which would be repurposed more for adult-type programs. And then a science addition at Scott Highlands Middle School. And then at the high school, we would propose a 300-student addition at Rosemount High School to accommodate their growth. Looking out beyond 10 years, so future phase and the long-term potential phases are really going to be dependent upon factors that become known, such as enrollment, economy, you know, those types of things. But potentially in the future, we could be looking at pre-K additions, potentially a new elementary school, number 21. And long-term, it may be required that we have a new elementary school, number 22. Again, we're not suggesting that in the current plan, we're just looking out beyond the next 10 years. Also, in the long-term potential area, we'd talk about additional middle school capacity, and then eventually at the high schools, maybe some future additions. The committee initially started looking at, you know, the land availability on the east side of the district and the potential growth in housing developments and student enrollment. And initially, the thought was someday this district might need a fifth comprehensive high school. Well, as we studied the issue, and we met with the city, and we met with the University of Minnesota and other players, we found out a majority of that land is already tied up by commercial industrial entities. So we really don't see where there's a lot of room for residential development. There's still room, and we're still going to experience growth, but maybe not to the degree that we initially thought. So again, that future phase and the long-term phase really are just our attempt at looking into the crystal ball and trying to predict what's going to happen. But certainly, that plan is going to develop and, and evolve over time. So again, to reinforce, I guess, what the current recommendation is for our growth issues, a new elementary school, a new Rosemount Middle School, and a science addition at Scott Highlands Middle School, and then an addition at Rosemount High School. So now if we shift gears and we look at the consistent student experience. We really focused on specialized learning areas, specifically science labs. We talked about adequate space for special education growth, and I talked about center-based special education being located throughout the district. Access to dynamic learning spaces, and the picture that Mary talked about at the beginning of the presentation of Apple, Apple Valley High School, those are the types of things we're looking at: flexible furniture, flexible learning spaces that students can use for various purposes and where students want to be. High-quality food service experience is always important for students, and critical building supports. This is one area, some of our buildings don't have loading docks, they don't have storage areas, so we examine those. Again, we want students to have a consistent experience across the district regardless of which school they attend. And then we studied the performing arts spaces available in the district. So here is a couple pictures, and again, I'm not sure what happened there, but that picture, but if you tilt your head, you can see these are some regular classrooms that are currently being used as science labs. They weren't built as science labs, they were built as regular classrooms. So they don't have water, they don't have lab stations, there's a lack of electrical infrastructure, there's no storage in these classrooms, no demonstration tables. There's carpet versus what you usually see in a science classroom is tile or some kind of material that's a lot easier to clean. So it's not the best situation. And these are pictures of Rosemount High School. The picture on the left is an area that had been renovated during the last bond referendum. But on the right, you see the media center, the food service area. And there's really an aging of space, particularly in the classroom portion of the building, that hasn't been touched. There's also the quantity and quality of science labs that's kind of deficient compared to our other high schools. There's not enough gym, kitchen, cafeteria space. And our suggestion tonight is going to be to continue the renovation of Rosemount High School, kind of a continuation of the 2015 bond referendum. Rosemount Middle School, you can see the narrow stairwell in the picture on the left, and then the crowded cafeteria in the middle. And then, of course, the 1918 portion of the building, which is still being used. And so we're really looking at that facility and saying, hey, it's probably outlived its useful life in terms of being a middle school. We could certainly use it for other purposes in the district, and that would be the intent, but it's probably time for a new Rosemount Middle School. And again, we've got the picture of the Apple Valley Commons as you come into the building, and then compare that to the picture on the right, which is a traditional classroom at Rosemount High School. They look a lot different, they feel a lot different for students. So if we talk, continue to talk about the consistent experience aspect of this plan, we want to make sure we have adequate space for special education. We want to make sure there's a high-quality food service experience. We need to provide the critical building supports that we don't currently have, and then improvements to the performing arts spaces. If we look at safety, security, and supervision, it's interesting, 2015 doesn't seem that long ago. But the camera systems that we put in with the 2015 referendum dollars are now at the end of life and need to be replaced. In addition to that, we would add cameras in every building for additional security. We'd also make other safety improvements at selected sites. Mainly from a supervision standpoint, we would do some restroom remodels. So both from a supervision standpoint and an accessibility standpoint. There's a need for increased lighting at the secondary schools, particularly for nighttime events in the parking lots. And I mentioned the remodel of some restrooms for supervision and access. So those are the three areas that the committee really focused on. And as I mentioned earlier, you know, facts became known throughout this process. And a big one was our October 1st, '22 enrollments. I gave a report to the board a few weeks ago that indicated the enrollments across the district were flat. That is not uncommon for school districts, kind of post-pandemic. But again, we do, we do believe the growth is going to continue, all signs point that way, but probably at a slower rate. Then we had the community survey, and there was a strong support for the master plan. When residents were asked about individual components of this plan, the support ranged from about 61% to 79%. And the median tax tolerance was around $10 per month. Now, the plan we're going to propose tonight is on a average value home of $400,000 in the district, and we're about at $11 per month with this proposal. But we tried to stay as close to the $10 as we, as we could. Okay, so I've talked about these. Phase 1 recommendations would be a new elementary school, additional capacity at Rosemount High School, as well as completing the renovations. And then a new Rosemount Middle School, secondary science lab upgrades, performing arts space improvements, and dynamic learning spaces, and then a continued investment in safety, security, and supervision. And boy, this one really turned out all over the board. So safety, security, and supervision would amount to about a $39.2 million investment. Elementary number 20, about $50.5 million. Land for a new middle school and potentially another elementary school at some point down the road, $14.4 million. Rosemount High School renovation and classroom additions, about $68.5 million. But I've made a note here that a lot of the work that would be done at that school would qualify for long-term facilities maintenance funding. So this does not include, include another $53 million that we could, we could use LTFM bonds for, and it wouldn't have a tax impact. New Rosemount Middle School, $133.8 million. To repurpose the existing Rosemount Middle School, $2 million. And then Dakota Ridge, which is our setting for program, would get an addition because that's a growing program, and we're over capacity there. Transition Plus would have restroom renovations, total of those two is about $7.9 million. Dynamic learning spaces and furniture, about $10 million. Middle school science labs, including an addition for three science classrooms at Scott Highlands Middle School, $19.4 million. High school science lab renovations, $6.5 million, and performing arts space improvements, $8.8 million. And then, part of this plan would be to consider a May of 2023 referendum. And so because of the timing, we'd have to build in some financing costs for capitalized interest because of the timing with our levy. So the total potential referendum is $374 million. And again, the tax impact of a $374 million referendum would be approximately $11 per month on a $400,000 home. If we look out into the future, again, we talked about an elementary school, and all these numbers are based on today's dollars. Obviously, inflation is going to impact this. We have land for a new elementary school, early childhood space to expand preschool, high school activity centers. Some people may think of the term "field houses." One of the things about buildings and adding additions and doing renovations to accommodate more students is that you have to have the core infrastructure areas to support that. And so we put a lot of additions on buildings in this district, but we haven't expanded FIAID areas, we haven't expanded the food service areas. So at some point, the district may want to consider high school activity centers at all four high schools. Again, dynamic learning spaces, we could continue that on, much like health and safety. We could include that in every referendum that we have from now until the future. And then locker room renovations. We're in pretty strong need of locker room renovations at our high schools. In addition, the Apple Valley, Apple Valley High School ice arena is woefully short on locker room space. So $20.8 million. And then obviously, whatever we do in the future is going to include safety, security, and supervision. And then looking out, kind of phase three, high school additions could be a potential down the road. Elementary number 22, land, obviously, and then safety, security, and supervision. So here we are this evening, November 14th. We're not asking the board to approve this plan tonight, but it's a preliminary recommendation for you to consider. And then November 15th, 16th, and 17th, so tomorrow night, we are at, where are we tomorrow night? Eastview High School. Wednesday night, we're at Rosemount High School, and Thursday night, we are at Egan High School. And if people could check the district website or contact the district office to sign up to let us know you're coming. Obviously, walk-ins are welcome, but it'd be really helpful to have an idea how many people will, will show up at these meetings. And then we're going to present the plan to the public at these dialogues and give them the opportunity for input. And then we will report back to the board on the district dialogues at the December 12th meeting. And we hope to have a final plan or a final recommendation to the board on January 9th. And that would include calling for a bond referendum most likely in May of 2023.
One, one note just to add on. There's a lot of information packed into, into a few slides and a lot of process and considerations. So first, I want to thank the almost 300 people in our internal constituents who jumped on a quick Zoom last week to hear kind of a preliminary report on what we, what was coming. And from that, we had such an incredible response of people willing to help us with those dialogues. We have community members who are going to facilitate those. We have administrators and other staff who are going to help record the comments. And we have really had a great outpouring of people willing to come, be participants in those groups, and let us know your thoughts and feelings. That is going to be very important as we move forward to know what is the final plan that we would like to bring for the board's consideration. So thank you to everyone who has already jumped on board and is going to come and share your opinions. And others, we will also have an opportunity on our website for you to give input. But our timeline is, is the next few weeks. So please, you know, pay attention and let us know your thoughts, and we, we really appreciate our community.
I'd entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, questions and comments from board members.
I'll just make a quick comment. You know, we got a chance to see this detailed presentation in the lead-up to this meeting as part of our district workshop. So I just, like Mary said, can't appreciate all the folks who gave input and contributed to this process. Thank you for also looking at our input as well through the workshop as well, and I saw some of that reflected, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Cory.
Just one thing kind of struck me as I was watching your presentation too. And number one, I have to echo what Sachin said. When you see those two slides you have of nothing but meetings, thinking about our facility needs, it really gives you some perspective of how much thought and effort goes into creating a plan like this. We get a 15-minute presentation, but there's hours and hours and hours of work put into a plan like that. One thing that struck me as I was watching your presentation is I love the old, the picture you show of our oldest building, or I should say our oldest still standing building, it's not actually even the oldest building in the district, but the oldest still, the 1918 school that's still operational today. And to think that at one point, that housed K through 12 in our entire district, right? And then to think about where we are today and the growth we've experienced and how this plan has continued to meet the needs that we have today. I just, I just really think, thank you and your whole team for all the thought they put into it. Because this really does, as you articulated, it, it, it comes out to really meet the needs that our students have today, in addition to thinking about the future.
I agree. That's what I, oh, go ahead, Art.
Well, I was just going to say that, you know, looking at our facilities, you know, is, is an ongoing, we're doing this all the time. And doing nothing isn't an option. So these community dialogues are so important for people to come help us shape what we need to do. I mean, there are so many things we could do. But what is, what does a community want, and what do we need, and what, you know, what can we financially support? I remember the last time we did this and went to all the community dialogues, and the conversations were great. And people came up with such good ideas to really help us, you know, put that plan into place. And this is not something that, you know, the seven of us or a committee will do. This is something the community really comes together and says, what do we want our schools to look like? You have to, it's like your own home, you have to keep them up. You have to be thinking about, you know, what are the new, you know, technologies that will need, you know, make our space better? Will make our space more livable? And in the case of schools, you know, a better academic and safe environment for our kids. So I just, you know, it's a lot of work, but this is where the community really steps in now and helps us. So please come out to the meetings or go onto the website and, and share your thoughts. Because we can't do nothing, the growth is coming. We can't just keep packing kids into smaller and smaller schools. So thanks, Mark, for everything.
Thank you.
Exactly. Joel.
Well, first of all, thank you and the committee for all the work that, that's gone into this and all the information that you've provided to the board through regular communications and then also through the two meetings that you've had with the board to lay this out in June and then last week. And just a couple of things that throughout the process have struck me is that I, I know there's so much discussion out there about, about what's happening in the southeast part of the district and how we're growing and, and all this is happening. But that this plan, it didn't just look at that, that we looked at the whole district and we're looking at all the buildings in our district and saying that we want a student in Egan, a student in Apple Valley, a student in Rosemount to have a similar daily experience and a similar education that they get out of our district, regardless of what building they go to. And that this plan will really help equalize areas where, where the schools are not currently equal. Like the science labs at middle schools and performing arts centers and different, just kind of behind-the-scenes stuff like the food service areas and that, that are really going to affect schools throughout our district. So it's not just Rosemount that we're looking at here, we're looking at the whole district. And I think that's going to really be beneficial to anyone who comes out of our district and says, I'm a 196 graduate. And that, that the results of this bond and the things that we can do with that are really going to help students across the whole district. So I'm very pleased that that, that was a overarching goal of this committee to give that similar daily experience to students across our district. So I thank you for that.
You know, and you make great points. And, you know, the growth component is probably focused more on the southeast part of the district because that's where the growth is occurring. But the consistent student experience and the safety, security components are applied throughout the district. So everybody will, you know, get something from this type of referendum. It's not all about just growth, it's about the entire district, so.
Yes, thank you.
Will this be on, this presentation be published on the web so people can look at it? Or are you going to wait till, if you don't come to one of the listening sessions?
Well, our board meetings are always on YouTube.
And we'll have it accessible for people.
Okay, good, good, thank you. That'll be great. Any other questions or comments? Perfect. Watch for that. Make sure that you go to one of the listening sessions and give us your opinions.
Thank you.
That's what we're looking for. Thank you. Next, under other action items, is our fiscal year 2021, '22 financial audit reports. We're going to call up Christopher Angan Robshu, Robshaw, and he will introduce Michelle Hoffman, the principal at Clinton Larson Allen, and she will be presenting. Thank you. Good evening, Christopher.
Good evening, Chair Magnusson, members of the board. Superintendent Krieger, Christopher Angan Robshaw, coordinator of finance for ISD 196. This is supposed to be the best time of the year because I'm saying goodbye to something we've been working on for a long time. So the audit process for us began in June, and we are closing the chapter on the audit for the 2022 fiscal year this evening. So we're closing the chapter on the fiscal 2022 with the presentation this evening. We are pleased to announce that we are getting a clean opinion from our auditors. We also have four process improvement opportunities. She's going to say findings, I think of them as learning opportunities for us. So without further ado, we'll present Michelle Hoffman. She is a principal with Clifton Larson Allen, and she's going to give you the, the full report for, for our act.
Thank you very much, Christopher. Good evening, members of the board. You know, I, I don't know if my presentation's going to be exciting as the previous two. I mean, those were definitely very interesting, new courses, new exciting facilities, opportunities. But that's okay, as we talked about, you know, you don't necessarily want your audit report to be exciting, you just want it to be good, right? So. All right, so I'm very excited to be here today just to present your, the fiscal audit. Of course, we are looking at fiscal '22. I know a lot of these things are looking at, you know, your current year, next fiscal year, and in the future. But we as auditors are always a little bit behind the times. So we are looking at our fiscal year '22 here, ending on June 30th. So overall, I'll just go over some overall audit results, you know, what you'll find in your, your audit opinion and your audit letters. As Christopher did just mention, we will be issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on your financial statements for fiscal '22. That is the best opinion an audit firm can give. You, of course, need an independent audit firm to come in, issue that opinion on your overall financial statements for the year. In addition to the actual audit opinion, of course, that, that part is looking at your numbers, your ending financial statements. But we do look at a few other things as well. And we do issue various letters and recommendations around some other areas. The one thing that we are required to look at is what we refer to as Yellow Book compliance. Yellow Book is really just referring to government auditing and accounting standards. And it's literally a yellow book, that's how it got its name. So if we had any items that indicated the district was not in compliance with regard to those standards, we would be communicating that to you. We do not, so everything looks good with regards to our Yellow Book compliance. Internal controls, another area we look at, and these are internal controls over your financial reporting. So we take a look at all the different transactions, reconciliations, processes that go into really creating those, you know, end financial numbers, whether it's your year-end financial statements or just the financial numbers that are, that you're seeing from month to month. And if we felt like there were any, you know, missing checks and balances, reviews or gaps that could open up the district to risk in any particular area, we would issue a potential area for improvement, as Christopher mentioned. And we are happy to report that we did not have any items that we felt were big areas for improvement in internal controls over financial reporting. So I have nothing to report to you today with regard to that piece. There are a couple of other areas we look at in addition. One is what we call our single audit. This is your federal compliance audit. As you know, you know, you spend a lot of federal funds, you have a lot of different programs that are federally funded. The federal government does require the auditors to do a compliance audit over those programs. It's a risk-based audit, so typically, your larger, newer, or more riskier programs are going to fall into and get tested. You know, depending on the year, some kind of rotate in and out. We did test four programs this year, which was quite a bit, a couple of them are newer programs. We tested the child nutrition program. We do have two areas there that we are just noting some, some area for improvement over procurement. We, of some sample items that we pulled, there were a couple contracts that didn't just quite have the required documentation based on federal guidelines, which are slightly different than state guidelines. So there are some differences and nuances there. And then the education stabilization fund, which is, includes your ESER and your GEAR funds, as I know a lot of people refer to those as that. And Minnesota COVID-19 testing program, which was new this year. We did some sample payroll transactions, we pulled some samples from both. And each one had one, one payroll transaction that didn't quite have the right documentation as well. We did also test the Title I program and happy to report that we do not have any recommendations there. So everything in the Title I program looked good. Last piece we look at is Minnesota legal compliance. This is just kind of a, a lot of miscellaneous things we look at to make sure the district is in compliance with state statutes. There's a bunch of different areas that this could cover, whether it's, again, state procurement, cash and investments, things like that. So a lot of miscellaneous provisions as well. I mean, if we had just any items that were not quite in, in line with state statute, even if it was like a particular transaction, we would include that in our report. But we have no items that we found that were not in compliance with Minnesota state statute. So now I'll go over, get into some numbers. You can see some financial results. I know this table is a little bit small, I think you have it at least in front of you as well. So I know there's a lot going on here. So these are our, I'm going to turn the, sorry, microphone a little bit so you can make sure you hear me. These are our audited financial fund balance, excuse me, numbers for just the general fund now. And as you can see, we do have several different categories there that your fund balance or you kind of equity is required to be reported in. The top one there, unassigned, that is really your kind of everything else type bucket. That is really the funds you have that you can use for essentially how you are, you know, choosing to see fit within your general fund. So we have a beginning balance there, as you can see, of about $64 million. And then we have our audited revenues and expenditures for that fund. And then the ending fund balance there of about $60 million. The other big category that you can see is your restricted, that's their kind of next largest one. And of course, that's the one that has a lot of different line items. There are various programs that are restricted within your general fund. And these are restricted by an external party. Most often, it's, of course, the state of Minnesota, MDE, that is restricting these funds. So you can also see we have our audited revenues in total for the general fund and audited expenditures. And then each of those amounts are kind of put into those different buckets. So when we take a look at our restricted funds, we have the revenues that you're getting from those and your expenditures. You can see there's also a transfer column there. And I do like to point that out since really what that's saying is that some of these programs are, are important to the district and maybe the funds you're getting from the state or from other sources aren't, aren't adequate in your mind and you are really wanting to invest some of your funds into these programs, put some more effort into them. And a big one there is Basic Skills that has quite a bit that's being transferred in. And, and that's really related to, you know, students who maybe are coming to the district not quite fully prepared to learn. And you're investing some additional funds and programs, whether it's additional instruction time, could be all-day kindergarten, you know, early education, those types of programs really help those students. So, so that's just showing that, you know, some of the areas that the district has really, you know, kind of chosen to put some more funds toward. At the bottom there, we do have the budget for both total revenue and total expenditures for the general fund. So you can see that revenue came in about 1% off from the budgeted amount, while expenditures were about 3.5% away from your final budgeted amount for the general fund. Here, again, this, this is a little bit small here, but this is, this table shows the rest of your funds and basically similar information where we have our, our categories of fund balance. Of course, there's a lot less categories in the other funds. Our audited revenues and expenditures, and then our ending fund balance. We do also, again, have your budget to actual amounts. So you can see for the food service fund, this fund was definitely one this year that was a little hard to predict. It was greatly impacted, of course, last year by the pandemic, and it was starting to operate a little bit differently. So definitely a little bit larger budget variances there. You can see about 10% and 8% there for revenues and expenditures, which is pretty common, something we've been seeing with a lot of food service funds. Community education, you can see there as well, your total budgeted revenues and expenditures, almost 3%, a little over 4% off for that one, which is also not, not impacted quite as much, but certainly had some impacts as your kind of, those programs were kind of getting back to a little bit pre-pandemic, normal activity. Capital projects fund, there was some funds that came in with some issuance of some certificates of participation. And then most of the fund balance in that fund was spent down. And that's a fund that really is kind of intentionally, usually kind of fluctuates with the, whether you issue debt, finish some large projects. So ending fund balance of a few hundred thousand, so most of that has been, those projects have been kind of wrapped up. Ending fund balance kind of being spent down there in the capital projects fund. And then your debt service fund is usually pretty much right on budget as we can kind of, we kind of know what, what our plan is for issuing debt and then paying the bonds, we know what the scheduled payments are. So there was a refunding that was issued in 2022. That's where, between that and your property tax levy, those are the, the revenues that'll be coming into that fund. And then your kind of scheduled debt payments there to see your ending fund balance in the debt service fund. And your last few funds listed there are just your internal service funds. All right, taking another look at the general fund, fund balance activity. Here again, we have, now we can kind of see a little bit of a five-year trend with our fund balance amounts in our different categories. You could see the general fund fund balance did increase about $9.2 million in fiscal 2022. And you can, you know, the unassigned looks like it went down by about $4 million. 2022, and you can, you know, the unassigned looks like it went down by about $4 million, but really that's more of a shifting of putting some of those funds into assigned. And assigned is a category that's really more just an earmark. You know, the district can choose to just kind of put those in the financials and say, hey, we're kind of earmarking some of these funds for these uses. That's really related to site carryover and also potential deficit budget for fiscal '23. So that was really just more shifting some funds from unassigned to assigned. The other number we do take a look at here on this graph is the bottom percentage there, the unrestricted fund balance or unassigned as a portion of your overall expenditures. This is a metric that we typically take a look at and is a good indicator of a district's sort of financial strength. You can see it's about 14%. It went down a little bit from last year, but last year was sort of your high level over the last five years. That is well above your policy. Your policy is to keep that at 5%, which, or a minimum of 5% to really just ensure that the fund balance of the district is healthy and strong and can kind of weather any potential future, you know, events or fluctuations such as we saw the last couple of years. Quick look at enrollments for the last five years. So fiscal '22 did have a slight increase in enrollment after the, you know, kind of the first decrease in a while, and the decrease in enrollment in fiscal '21, you know, that was happening all over the place, whether it's charter schools, districts, you know, we saw it kind of all over. A lot of districts were experiencing similar slight declines in fiscal '21. So it was a little bit of a bounce back of almost 180 M's or average daily membership in fiscal '22. So not only remained steady, but did start to kind of recapture some of that increase. Another interesting information on here is you can see we do include our open enrolled in and out from the district. So residents that are open enrolling out, that did go down by, you know, about 80 residents as far as how many were potentially open and enrolling out. While your open enrolled in only went down by about 33. So you definitely kind of, that gap closed actually a little bit from fiscal '21 to '22. And for the last five-plus years, you can see that you've always been kind of having more students open enroll in than have been open enrolling out of the district. General fund expenditures by object code. So we break it down. As you can see, the five object codes there on the left. We do have fiscal '22 actual compared to budget as well as actual fiscal '20 and '21. You can see that overall expenditures were under budget by about 3.5%. Certainly, there was several categories there that contributed to that. The first two big ones there are salaries and employee benefits were both a fair amount under budget, and this is another common trend. We've definitely been seeing a lot of districts where potentially positions weren't being able to be filled, you know, tough time finding some of those. So a lot of districts were seeing similar type of numbers under budget. The other big one, of course, you can see there, the biggest one is capital expenditures, about $7 million under budget, and a lot of that was due to some of the timing of projects, supply chain kind of challenges, getting, you know, whether materials or things being ordered coming in. So that was the largest contributed to that under budget. Our food service fund over the last five years, so your revenue is that dark blue bar, your expenditures are the kind of the lighter blue, and then the fund balance is the yellow. As you can see, it went down a little bit from fiscal '20, '21, and then people are probably thinking, what the heck happened in '22? It kind of went crazy, what did we do to our food service fund? The biggest change there was really related to the pandemic. Districts were provided waivers where you could operate the summer food service program, basically year-round during the school year, and that program has always been operated such that you, basically all students, all students were allowed to get free meals. There was no, you know, applying for it based on income and putting into categories. You could offer any student who wanted one a free meal, and that meal was then reimbursed by the federal government at the federal rate for a free meal. So in the past, you know, free lunches had, of course, a higher reimbursement rate than a reduced lunch or a paid lunch. So not only were more students taking advantage of that because they were free, you were getting them reimbursed at a higher rate. So clearly expenditures went up with that because you were serving a lot more meals, your revenue went up, et cetera. Those waivers did end in June of 2022, so we expect that fiscal '23 will certainly decline in revenue and expenditures as you kind of start to get back more into operating your regular program. So we will see decreases next year in revenue expenditures, just kind of, this sort of blip year in a way for the food service fund. Visually, this is showing the meals served by category. So yellow is your free meal. So you can see that kind of program that I just talked about did start in fiscal '21. Of course, we had more remote learning days, so even though we had that program going on, we weren't serving as many meals. In fiscal '21, fiscal '22, that program kept going and served a lot of free meals. So fiscal '20, I will say, in total was about 1.9 million meals, and then they were, of course, split between free, reduced, and paid. Fiscal '21 was a little over 1.5 million, all free meals. Fiscal '22 was almost double that with a little over 3 million, basically all free meals. There was a very small 80,000 full-priced meals served in June when that waiver ended. So community service fund operating results, so these bars are showing basically the same thing the food service fund did, with the dark blue being the revenue, the light blue being the expenditures, and the yellow being the fund balance. So a nice, as you can see, expenditures were slightly above revenue this in fiscal '22, but overall, fund balance stayed pretty consistent to the prior year, and the community service fund has generally had a very healthy fund balance, and revenues, expenditures are, you know, remaining steady and starting to increase again, really showing that those programs that are being offered to students in the community are being well-received and certainly being taken advantage of. All right, here we go. Expenditures per ADM. So this graph is showing, so the first three columns there, 2021, are all districts in the state of Minnesota, the seven county metro area, and then the third one is districts with enrollment greater than 4,000. That one kind of slid over, it looks like. And then the four columns in 2019 through 2022 represent your district 196. So of course, we only have data for the statewide columns for fiscal '21. It's not available yet for fiscal '22. So if we were to take a look and try and compare, you know, we'd of course look at your column fiscal '21. And I always tell people that there's a lot of different ways you could use this graph, and it really depends on, you know, where your district is at, what your goals are, things like that. So, you know, you can see that you are spending less than the districts, other districts per student, per ADM this is, than other districts in the state of Minnesota. So that certainly could be a good thing, but I think it's also, you know, something to potentially just look at and say, well, the one category you're spending more in is regular instruction, and, you know, you might be very proud of that and might be excited to see that. Potentially, there are other categories that you look at, and you might wonder, should we be spending more or should we be spending less? So I think there's a lot of different ways you can use this, of course. It's just one tool and one data set that should be used in conjunction with sort of other goals of the district, but an interesting one that we like to include. And with that, I'm coming to the end of my presentation. Does anyone have any questions? I guess maybe before I say that, I definitely want to say, of course, again, thank you to the finance team. They were really great. Everything was very prepared and ready for us, so we always enjoy coming and working on the audit. And, you know, four federal pro, single audits is a lot, so they had to deal with a lot of compliance audits, which is more than, I think, in the other districts I work at. So we came on with a lot of questions and a lot of work for them, so they did a great job in preparing the audit.
Super. I'll ask if there are any questions from the audience. Any questions for board members? We got to go through this hour before the meeting tonight, so this is our second time through, so looks good, the thing we like, that it's boring and it's a clean audit. Two things we really like. It's a clean audit, and we've done well. This is another action item this evening, so I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the finance, the audit as presented.
Motion approved.
Bianca and Secowden, or Suchan. Looking right at you. All in favor, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a 7-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lot of interesting information on that, and that also will be on the website. Board members and superintendent updates. Board members who have something they'd like to update for this evening? I have one. I just got a text message from Tony Tashner, and he said that on Tuesday, the plan is to have on the district website and all school websites on the front page is to have the presentation that we just saw today on the facilities' needs and a link to the PDF for the presentation and a link to the video of tonight's presentation and a link to an online feedback form so you can share your feedback. So look on your websites, school websites sometime tomorrow. Get a minute to get it up there. So there you go. I ask and people text me answers, so there you go. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. I want to thank our schools for the wonderful programs that they had last Friday to recognize veterans on Veterans Day. Apple Valley and Eagan High Schools had wonderful student assemblies with patriotic music, motivational speeches, and moving tributes to our veterans and active-duty military personnel. Highland Elementary School also had a very moving flag-raising ceremony in front of the school on Friday morning. I was very grateful for the staff who developed these opportunities and especially proud of the reverence our students showed toward our veterans during these events. Also, November is Native American Heritage Month, and we proudly celebrate and acknowledge the diverse cultures, traditions, histories, and important contributions of those in District 196, Minnesota and across the country. Minnesota is home to 11 tribal nations and a resilient and robust urban Native American community. In District 196, we have a thriving Native American community with more than 525 indigenous students across the district, representing over 45 different sovereign nations. A majority of our students are Ojibwe in Dakota-Lacota. I encourage everyone to visit the American Indian Education Program webpage, district196.org, and explore the November newsletter, which has great book titles, information about events across the metro area, educational resources, and more.
Thank you. We've come to the end of our meeting this evening. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to adjourn.
It's a move. Second.
Motion by Cory, a second by Joel. All in favor of adjournment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on the 7-0 vote. Good night.